Hello, everybody. I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to this county council town hall meeting. We are at Sligo Middle School in Silver Spring where we really have a big room full of residents who are here, ready to ask council members questions about the issues that matter to them. But before we go to the floor for questions, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Nancy Florine for a few opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Susan, and thank you all for being here tonight. So yesterday was a really big day, and today, though, we're returning to real government, which is a local community that, and we're very attentive to how we serve you here. I'm Nancy Florine. I'm at-large member of the county council. And let me introduce my colleagues. From my far left is Mr. Sidney Katz, who represents the mid-part of the county, Gaithersburg and Rockville and vicinity. And next, we have Hans Reimer, who's an at-large council member. Next is George Leventhal, another at-large council member. To my immediate left is Council Vice President Berliner, who represents, boy, everything, from Kensington all the way up to Frederick County, right? Right along the Potomac. To my far right is Council Member Craig Rice, who represents the Up County. Next to him is Council Member Elrich, another at-large member of the county council. And then, we come to Council Member Nancy Navarro and Council Member Tom Hucker. Now, we didn't think this through, but tonight, we are right on the border between their two jurisdictions. So first, I'm going to ask Council Member Navarro to say a few words of welcome, and then to Tom Hucker, whose district is right across the street.
Well, hello, everybody. This is really exciting. This part of the county is very familiar to me because I lived less than a mile from here for 10 years, was my first home where my children learned how to walk, et cetera. And so in 2011, when my actual district was redrawn, I was able to come back and represent this area again. So it's really, truly, a pleasure to be here. I hope I can sound coherent after last night. But it is very important that we come here and we listen to you and have a conversation about your priorities, your needs, and everything else. So, thank you. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.[165.34][165.34](Laughter). I'm Tom Hucker. I represent Council District Five. This, as Nancy said, was supposed to be in Council District Five, but we're actually across the street, so I only, I don't have full legitimacy in welcoming you since it's not my district.[179.65][179.65](Laughter). But I'll take it anyway. I know many of you live in District Five. Raise your hand if you live Tacoma Park, Silver Spring, White Oak, Burtonsville. All right. The rest of you probably want to live in District Five.[189.95][189.95](Laughter). We would love to have you. And I'm glad to see you here. I thought most of you would be in the fourth stage of grief like I am today, but we're going to have a very rational and tolerant and productive conversation about efficient government that we have locally. So, thanks all, to everybody for coming.
Okay. We do have a few folks we'd like to recognize, though, before we start with questions. And so tonight with us, we have Catherine Provost. If she could stand up, please. That's from Congressman Van Hollen's office. Thanks for being here tonight.
U.S. Senator.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Newly-elected U.S. Senator. Also Jill Ortmann Faust, from the Board of Education.[232.51][232.51](Applause). Reimberto Rodriguez is with us this evening from the regional service, he's the Regional Services Director in Silver Spring.[241.12][241.12](Applause). And next to him is Luisa Montero Diaz, and she is the Director of the Mid-County Regional Services Center.[249.29][249.29](Applause). And finally, we have Cherie Branson, standing right here in the front with me, and she is our Director of Procurement. Please stand up.[258.62][258.62](Applause). Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight, though. And this lovely woman has agreed to ask the first question this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. My name's Kathy Vass, and I live in Silver Spring. And I actually live in Ms. Navarro's district, but I want to talk about a problem that also affects Mr. Hucker's district. We have a dam built in our neighborhood, just a few blocks down from the school here. The dam also has a pond behind it that was retrofitted by the county, and the combination is causing flooding for 14 homes in this neighborhood. We've been talking to Montgomery County DEP since January about this man-made problem. Our home, we're seeing a process where our homes are being devalued, our insurance costs are going up, our preventative maintenance costs are going up. We've had neighbors who've blocked in doors and windows to keep the floodwaters out. Our permitting rights have already been restricted. So, so far, the Montgomery County solution has been simply to expand the floodplain and restrict our permitting rights. We wanted to ask if you're aware of the flooding problem, and if you're aware of any intentions by the county to correct the problem and work on a solution that will help all of the affected households. Thank you.
Thanks for that question. Let me just say, a number of us have been briefed on this and are very concerned. I think Council Member Navarro can help you with this, though.
We have been briefed preliminarily. My understanding is that the Department of Environmental Protection has been in touch with the affected homeowners. This is a real concern to me, as your representative. I do agree that the county has to seek some solutions because there's definitely been some issues with the way that the dam was actually first constructed. And so, they have kept me abreast of the meetings that they've had with the community, and they're supposed to also let me know, and of course, all of us know, what are some of the preliminary recommendations that they're going to be acting upon. But my office is very much, you know, in contact, and please be assured that I will be looking out for your needs because it's really a very, it's a very delicate and very important issue that does affect a few of you, and we need to get to the bottom of it. And I will also say that my Chief of Staff, Adam Fogel, is right behind you, and so, anything else that we need to follow up on?
He's on it.
You know, he's great. But we have been briefed, and we are staying on top of it.
Good evening, council members. Daniela Shaveko lives here in Kensington, as you know. First of all, I would like to invite you to next Monday's Civic Federation General Session. It's our 880th. We've been doing it for a while, and our program is going to be on the environment, the state of the county's environment, our air and water quality. And right now, I'm working on the PowerPoint presentation for the climate change component of the program. And it's really sad news. As you know, we were supposed to decrease both emissions and energy use 10% compared to 2005 levels, and low and behold, we're still increasing them. And our carbon footprint is pretty straightforward. A third of it is transportation, and two-thirds of it are buildings. And in terms of transportation, we're still continuing to sprawl. We're still approving these sector plans, and all these developments in the middle of cornfields with no transit in sight. And on the building, green building front and reducing our energy consumption, right now, there's a bill in front of the county council that is arguably going to weaken our green building standards instead of improving it. And it's so bad that the local industry is afraid that their competitiveness is going to be compromised with this bill. And so, what I am seeing is that we're moving in the direction reverse of where it's supposed to go on climate change, and I just wanted you to prove me wrong. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Daniela. Lots of folks here have been very engaged in this issue for many years. Let me turn first to Council Member Leventhal.
Thank you, Daniela. Great to see you, and I look forward to working with you on the International Green Construction Code. I've really appreciated your input on that, and I'm eager to make sure that the council works towards the strongest possible update to the Green Buildings Law, which I sponsored and which was originally enacted in 2006. But it's way out of date now, as you know. It's been 10 years. When I introduced the Green Buildings Law, it was not the state-of-the-art in the field. There were a lot of architects and builders who didn't know what LEED meant. Now, the state of knowledge has cascaded far beyond where the county's requirements are, and with input from you and others, I've been pushing very hard for the executive branch to release the new building code. We now have it. We need some time to review it. I'm going to be working closely with you to make it as strong as it possibly can be. I do really appreciate your leadership on these issues, and I think it's very helpful that you keep pushing us. We aren't actually building developments in the middle of cornfields. That's not what's happening. And we are working right now on a subdivision staging policy that provides disincentives to develop sprawl development outside of metro station policy areas and imposes lower taxes, although still taxes, in the metro station policy areas for just that reason, to try to concentrate development where we have the infrastructure and where people, ideally, can walk to transit rather than using their cars. That's a focus for the entire council. But it helps a lot to have community activists like you continue to push and to measure our carbon emissions, and I'm eager to learn more about the source of your data because that is really something we need to measure very carefully.
Council Member Reimer?
Thank you, Daniela. Good to see you again. To Mr. Leventhal's comments, I can add, Montgomery County government operations are carbon neutral. That's a really big deal. We are a community of a million people, and our government operations are carbon neutral, and that includes not only our buildings, energy consumption, but our fleets. Because we are purchasing so much, not only renewable energy, but the credits to offset the carbon emissions of our fleet. So, there are very few local governments in the country that are carbon neutral in their operations. Mr. Berliner may have the mic soon, but he authored legislation, and I worked with him on that legislation, as did many council members, to move us very quickly to a 100% renewable energy portfolio. But we're actually beyond that for our buildings in order to offset our fleet. So, that's fantastic. I welcome your advocacy for putting housing around public transportation. That would be great. You know, we're taking up the Bethesda Sector Plan. We're working through the Lyttonville Sector Plan. We recently did the Wheaton Sector Plan. I think you were quite advocate, quite involved in that one. But, you know, we know that putting housing near public transportation is a major aspect of dealing with the transportation segment of the emissions, you know, market. So, we're working hard to make those tough decisions. Mr. Leventhal commented on the subdivision staging policy. We are charging higher taxes, impact taxes for development that's farther away from public transportation. And we are also, for the first time, beginning to require development to mitigate for infrastructure needed for bike and pedestrian modes of transportation. So, it's a really, a leap forward in our development policies to require all modes of transportation to be improved with new development. So, there's just so much going on. I think you should feel, I know that you don't, Mr. Shaveko, but I think most of our residents should feel that, you know, our county is at the forefront of environmental leadership, and you have so many council members committed to achieving that. And, you know, we love your ideas, and we'll continue to, I will continue to consider your suggestions for everything. Thank you.
And we have one more comment on the subject. Council Member Hucker?
Thank you, Daniel. Roger and Nancy and I serve on the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure and the Environment Committee, as you know, and I'm the lead member for the environment. I agree with everything that's been said, and I think you know Maryland is really a leader on environmental issues among the states, and Montgomery County is really the leader in local government and environmental issues in Maryland. We're going to continue to really press on that priority, and if you're interested in that issue, I'd encourage everybody to watch or attend the hearing our committee has at 9:30 tomorrow morning. We don't rest.[802.63][802.63](Laughter). To explore the energy use, the renewable energy use in particular, of the county government, the school system, park and planning, and WSSC. I asked the Chair, Mr. Berliner, to call this hearing in particular because I think while the county has been very aggressive at adopting renewable energy use, the school system in particular could be more aggressive, and, you know, they spend right now $38 million a year on their energy bill. And every dollar we can squeeze out of that and apply to educators and their salaries and not to PEPCO is the right thing to do. So that's why we're holding this hearing tomorrow, and I encourage you to watch.
I will be. Thanks.
You can do it online.
Good evening. My name is Raj Upur, and I'm a resident of Montgomery County since 94, 22 years proud resident of this county. And I really appreciate our leaders and the work that you do regularly observing this all these two decades. But we have opportunity to do it better all the time, and that's why I'm here. I have four topics to bring it to your attention, but I'm not sure I should do it one by one by giving chance to everybody else, or how it will pan out, but I will give you the four topic subjects. One is MCPs, education of our children. Second is panhandling that I have observed in the county increasing. The third issue is the solid waste disposal facility and some of the recent difficulties in crowd and management of bays and orange cones that have decreased the ease with which we, or I, or my family members and others dispose of our waste at least once a week or more. And the fourth one is some of the calls I have been getting from social workers and school nurses who cater to the kids because of some of the recent policies of our county president and her county council president. Your name is specifically mentioned in each of these phone calls, and I wish to ask you directly versus asking somebody else. That's why I'm here. These are the four issues.
Well, that's a nice range of questions. The first one had to do with MCPs.
MCPs.
Well, luckily, we have a member of the Board of Education here, but this has been a year of the county, the council's commitment to funding education. Is that your question?
My question is county's continued support and my observation about perhaps decreasing funding for gifted and talented programs and magnet programs in our MCP schools. See, our country, our whole nation and this region, needs a constant supply of the best and the brightest in order to cater to the employment needs of, in the science, and then medicine, engineering, technology, and things like that. My understanding by speaking with teachers and educators, including, I used to work with Ms. Navarro on the MCCPTA, and I constantly, I'm a member of PTSAs. And through that, what I understand is the common core education system tries to increase the fundamental or the basic level of all children, which is very good, which is laudable, and we want all children to do well to the best of their potential. But also, we have another need. When there are small percentage of people who are truly gifted and who have the potential to excel in whatever shoes by the gift of God, with intelligence and internal capacities they have, if we do not cater to those capacities, we are losing. We are wasting their mind and perhaps shooting ourselves in the foot by not having continued and increasing support for GT programs and magnet programs. And I want to hear from the entire council, where is the direction in continued support for these GT and magnet programs is my question on MCPs.
Thank you. Let me turn to the Chair of the Education Committee, and then Council Member Navarro.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the question. Being a person who actually attended the first magnet program that we had here in Montgomery County, when it first started at Tacoma Park Intermediate School, the Math/Science/Computer Science Magnet, I was in that first class and ended up graduating through Blair High School. Let me tell you, what happened before in terms of what our thought was with magnet program, with the magnet program in general, has not worked. Because what we've had is we've had a tremendous need for making sure that we continue to challenge our students, but then had limited capacity in which to do it. And so what that's done is set up many of our children who want to aspire and to push themselves harder that aren't able to do so. Those programs are oftentimes always limited in terms of their capacity. And so, I'm pleased that with, in conjunction with our school board and with our new superintendent, the move is for us to make sure that these programs are spread throughout and infused into every single one of our schools. We need to get away from the old antiquated model of saying that we're going to bus kids to Poolsville or bus kids to Blair. The reality is, is that there are kids that want to achieve at every single one of our schools. We've got to diversify our curriculum so that it speaks to every single one of our children, whether they decide they want to be an aerospace engineer or an HVAC specialist. All of those things are important to us, and every single one of those jobs matter in our community. And so from that perspective, we're headed in the right direction. So let me just tell you, you've got a great new superintendent who truly believes, and you've got a great school board, even with our new elected school board who's coming online, who feel very passionate about this. So you should feel very confident in that we are now headed in the right direction.
Council Member Navarro?
So, the reality is that a lot of conversation, there's been a lot of discussion about this particular budget this year. And, you know, for me personally, the reason why I raised my hand to increase property taxes and recreation taxes was because when I saw that we had not gone above maintenance of efforts since 2008, was, seven, and we had added 19,000 students to Montgomery County Public Schools since 2007, it was very clear to me that we could not, at the one hand, you know, have a new superintendent and then give him a school system that needed so many resources. And I believed that what our constituents want is for us to be proactive and not wait until the quality of the school system hits a particular bottom, because then it's much more expensive to get it back. And so, my sense was that this is what our constituents want, want us to be proactive, want us to invest. And so, to your point, this is also, it has a mirror image, which is the issue of the opportunity gap. Because at the same time as you're talking about our needs for workforce, we also see a growing number of students who are disproportionately affected by this opportunity gap, the achievement gap. And here in Montgomery County, we are working very hard to develop our biotech, our life science, you know, sectors. We need all of our students to do very well. This country needs all of our students to do very well. Because this opportunity gap is not necessarily just an achievement gap, and it's a social issue. It's an economic imperative that we're seeing across the nation. So this is what we're grappling with in Montgomery County right now. And the recreation tax was to provide those spaces because our debt service now has hit $500 million. And so we needed those spaces as well for our students. And it is my belief that our school system is the jewel of our county. This is why most of us move here. This is why I moved here. So we had that responsibility. And so now, it's up to the school superintendent and our school board to ensure that those resources are used adequately to fulfill all the needs that you're describing, gifted and talented throughout. But most specifically, I think we need to stabilize this issue of this growing opportunity gap because all of our students are important to us, and we need them.
All right. Good evening. So my name is Aziz Sani. I am the Director of the YES Program, the Youth Empowerment Series, out of the East County Community Center. And my question, just a quick background. So back in about 2008, 2009, the East County region lost the Police Activities League, also known as POW, in which police officers and the youth of the community would go on field trips, have organized programming, but overall develop strong relationships between police and the local community in which they served. As you can see, with rising tension between youth, police, the mistrust of that, so on and so forth, my question to you is what programs are in place to either revive the POW program or bring something similar to it for the youth of today?
Let me ask Reimberto Rodriguez, Director of the Silver Spring Center, if you can comment on that.
Well, as far as programming is concerned, what I'd like to do an offer is to speak with you and take it with Gabe Albarnas, our Recreation Department Director, so we can get together with you on that. Okay?
And our Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Council Member Elrich.
I think you raise a really good question. I mean, there's ongoing discussion about where we go with the police department, and for a lot of people, there's a belief that we need to be more engaged and do more in the way of community policing, and that those programs where officers were active in the community, participated in sports and other activities with kids, really helped the community and helped these kids develop better relationships and had, I think, a really positive effect. And I think a lot of stuff got lost in the recession, and I think what we're looking at is it's been really hard for the council to add services back in. We took some extraordinary steps this year, as Nancy pointed out, in terms of making a decision to raise taxes and to start to restore services, and we've been trying to restore services since we, I would almost say got out of the recession, but since we seem to emerge from the worst of the recession. And these are the kind of things that I think we really have to get back to. So, I'm more than happy to raise this with the chief. You know, we do have programs like the Youth Outreach Network, and we do collaborations with lots of groups around the county, but I don't think there's any substitute for the, you know, I come out of Tacoma Park, and the basketball league with the police was a big deal there in its time, and I do think we need to figure a way to be able to fund those activities again.
And Council Member Katz?
Thank you. I don't know if this is on. Yep. You're there. It is one. Thank you very much for the question. I also have to agree with what has been said about the programs themselves, but, you know, we also do the school resource officers inside the schools. If a student, if a young person, any person, but especially a young person sees a police officer as, in a daily activity, not when there's necessarily bad news, but when there's just day-to-day activity, that proves to them is just as much, and as Mark was talking about playing basketball, all of these types of programs. And there was a time that we had the DARE programs where a police officer would come into an elementary school, and I think it was third grades or whatever, and work with them over drugs and that drug, and that they should not get themselves in that type of situation. We are so much better off if we can do that. We are, and I know the police officers, in many cases, enjoy doing that as well because they get to meet young people when there's not that type of excitement. So, it is programs that we should expand, it's programs that we need to work on, it's programs that we should be doing inside the schools even more than what we're doing. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Carol Ann Barth. I'm a resident of Tom Hucker's district. Hi, Tom. My question is very unsexy, but of great concern to many of my fellow residents, because here in historic, densely populated Silver Spring and other areas like it in the county, McDOT has rated our residential roads, many of them as very serious or failed. Now, if you're not familiar with the PCI index, that translates to, holy crap, am I driving in Mosul? So...
You're talking about road surface?
Yes. We're talking about...
Just translating for everybody else.
Residential road reconstruction. And that's important because that's the term, not putting icing on the top. The county budget documents themselves say that it would take $40 million a year just to not lose any more ground and fall further behind. It also says that many residential roads needing resurfacing may not be resurfaced for 40 years. If we look, I recollect that you did just yesterday pass an additional $8 million. I thank you for that. But keep in mind, $10 million a year still only gets us 25% of the way to not losing ground. Looking at the performance metrics in the budget, in fiscal year 14, we had 52% of these roads at fair or better. And our fondest hope, according to this document, in fiscal year 18, is that we will achieve 36%, right? So we have lowered expectations. And this affects all modes of transportation. It's not just motorists, it's bus riders, it's kids walking to school, it's bike riders, it's people trying to get to metro. So, my ask is very simple. Will you commit to fully funding residential road reconstruction so that we can see improved residential roads, and here's the kicker, in my lifetime?[1680.11][1680.11](Laughter).
Ms. Barth, you're the shining example of why Montgomery County is so great, because we have people like you who pay such attention, who can rattle off these statistics and are really acting and advocating on behalf of the community. Let me turn to the Chair of the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure and Environment Committee because it's a very timely issue for that committee.
So you're absolutely right. It's appalling. Our roads really are not in the shape they should be. We all know that to be true. Every year, our county council has increased the dollars for this very purpose that has been sent to us by the county executive. This past year, the county executive only sent over something on the order of $3.5 million. Yet, the Department of Transportation had gone out to neighborhoods and said, "We will get to your neighborhood based on a $40 million expenditure, and here's when we'll get there." We have not appropriated $40 million in the 10 years that I've been on the county council, ever. And yet, our Department of Transportation went out and made promises to communities based on a fiction. So, my colleagues and I said, "This is not okay. Our roads are not okay." I introduced legislation with the support of almost all my colleagues for $8 million more, and we will act on that in committee tomorrow, and we will have it before the full council as soon as possible. We really do need to make a dent in it, but do appreciate, I don't believe there's been a year that we've ever come close to $40 million.
Council Member Elrich?
So, I mean, you're raising one of the most difficult issues that we have to talk about. I think a lot of us feel that, you know, the referendum on term limits was partly driven by... by a decision to raise taxes in order to reduce class size in the schools. And we don't have mad money lying around, despite what some people may think, to, I think, easily increase the expenditures. And I really believe that this community needs to have a serious discussion about what kind of government you want, and what kind of services do you want, and what are you willing to pay to get those things? There is no free ride. And if I had to find $40 million from this, would you prefer that I take it out of the police department? Would you like me to not open a fire station? I mean, should we not increase, you know, class sizes? I mean, it's really a hard thing to do. I'm not averse to doing it. I think it's a shame. And I gotta say, this is a deficit that built up before any of us landed on the council. When I was first on the council, and we got this annual, supposedly annual report about the state of the roads, it was some hundreds of years that it would take to get to the road. So this is an accumulated problem that has landed with us. But if you want us to get out of it, then we've got to be able to have a conversation about what's an appropriate tax rate to do the job. So, and I know, you know, you're not close to that, I'm not saying you are. But this is a collective problem.
And let me say, I welcome that dialogue, because one of the other things that I would have loved to have talked about tonight, but I realize I can't take too many issues either, is the millions of dollars that we're spending on BRT, which, for example, could have been spent on free ride-on for three whole years. Or, another way to look at it, it could meet this gap. So I know these decisions are hard, I know there's lots of competing issues, but I do believe that the council could be making better decisions. And I think we have a lot of information and a lot of ideas about how to approach that. And I think if we could have a genuine exchange of ideas, and not just three-minute soundbites, I think we could get somewhere. And I certainly am willing to put that time in, and I know many other residents that are. So I'd love to take you up on that challenge, Mark.
Thank you very much. And let me just say that we do have an opportunity for people to weigh in on priorities, which is during our budget process. And we very rarely hear any suggestions as to what we should not spend money on. So I do welcome everyone's input on that issue.
Hi, my name is Senal Lesusi, and I am a student at Montgomery College Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus. I live in Silver Spring, and I went to Blake High School. I plan to graduate in spring 2017 and get a job as a diplomat in Montgomery County. I'm here with other Tacoma Park Silver Spring students. Will the student of Montgomery College please stand? We want to thank you for all the support you gave to Montgomery College. My question is about the plans to replace our math and science buildings. As a member of the Student Senate, I met with students who take classes in math and science buildings. The three main issues are the labs, plumbing, and stairs. The labs' equipments are inadequate and old. The students cannot make use of the lab equipments during their classes. Instead, they start to fail the class and only listen to professors during lab time without a lab. Secondly, the plumbing. Some mornings, the smell from the bathroom, from the first floor smells so bad, and students have to stay in the classrooms smelling human waste depending on the plumbing condition of the day. Finally, the stairs are so small and narrow that if a student is not careful, they may easily fall, even if they hold on the rail. Also, the elevators malfunction every 30 minutes, which limits the choices for the students to enter the second and the third floor of the buildings. In other campuses, for example, Rockville and Gatersburg, the facilities have upgraded, making students more interested in attending classes in those campuses instead of Tacoma Park Silver Spring. What will the county do to make sure we have quality math and science building for students? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I bet you're going to be a great diplomat. Let me turn to the Chair of our Education Committee, and then to Tom Hucker, who's your district person.
All right, so let me just say that as Chair of the Education Committee, we recently were there, and I know a number of my colleagues were there as well for breakfast at Montgomery College's campus in Tacoma Park Silver Spring, and certainly are in support. I am a council member who's in support and think that a facility that was around when I was in high school, and that was quite some time ago, is still there and is still supposed to be competitive and make sure, and it addresses one of the concerns that we heard earlier, when it comes to making sure that we're keeping our students to the top notches so that they can be globally competitive. Because that's the reality of the world that we live in now, and that means that we have to have 21st century facilities, and yours is not one of those. And so I think that there's got to be commitment. I think that we've heard from council members, as well as from some of our state advocates, that also feel as though this is a priority for us. And so I'm hopeful that we'll see this come to fruition and see that Tacoma Park Center, that math-science building, turn itself around and be a beautiful place that you can be proud of.
All right, Tom.
Thank you, that was very persuasive and very diplomatic. I totally agree with what's been said. You might not know, if you don't follow the details of our six-year capital improvement plan, that the math and science building at Tacoma Park, I absolutely agree on the condition. Before I was on the county council, I served in the, represented this district, next-door district, in the House of Delegates for eight years. And one of the first things Montgomery College had me do was tour the math and science facility to show me the poor conditions there. And that was 10 years ago. And I know things haven't gotten better since then. In the last budget, very tight budget, a lot of demands on our capital needs, that project started out in the budget and in the CIP. It came out for a little while, as there were other pressures. We fought to get it back in. We successfully got it back in, we raised the recordation tax to help pay for it, so thank all of your neighbors for helping to pay for that. And that's now on the plan to be renovated and rebuilt. So anyway, that's on the plan. I wish we're next year, it's not next year, it'll be a couple of years, but we're definitely getting there, because I agree with Craig, this is Montgomery County, Maryland, and we need, we're training the engineers and the scientists of the future, and they need premier technology. They don't need stuff that looks like my high school in the 80s in the Midwest. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Cook. I'm resident of Bethesda. Thanks for your time. Mr. Elrich, I'm a fan, thanks for your leadership. I assume most, if not all, of you guys are Democrats on the stage here today? And just had a question regards to that. A big part of the Democratic Party platform is to achieve $15 minimum wage and tied to inflation. I'm curious, who among you is championing that cause? And what can we expect? When can we expect it?
Well, that bill is before us now. Councilmember Elrich?
So I worked to put together the first coalition that was raising the minimum wage in the region to 1150. And I put in a bill now to take us to $15 an hour by 2020. I expected to get committee hearings in November. I would find it difficult to believe that we would not do something that's kind of core in the Democratic platform, and I absolutely believe it's necessary. People cannot live on minimum wage as it is now. Even 1150 doesn't get us where we need to be. Frankly, $15 isn't actually where you need to be, because it's not a living wage, but it's a big difference. And you know, my example I give people is that if I had a couple working 40 hours a week at a $15 minimum wage, you're about $60,000 a year. And if you use 30% of your income as a guide for what you should spend on housing, that gets you about $1,500 a month for housing. Now, there's not a lot you can find in Montgomery County, but there is stuff you can find in Montgomery County for 1,500. So I've always tried to tie it to a sense of what do you need to actually live on and house yourself in the county, and I'm optimistic about this.
Councilmember Levittow?
So I'm Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee, which will consider the minimum wage bill. I'm also a co-sponsor of the bill. I support increasing the wage to $15 by 2020. We had a committee date, November 28th. The staff just came to me and said he wants more time to work on the economic analysis that council members and community members had asked for. I'm hoping we can find a date in the month of December before the end of this calendar year. I'm hoping my colleagues on the committee will work with the council staff and identify a date that works for everyone. I want to get it done, but the November 28th date, staff asked for a little more time. But we're very soon going to take it to committee, and I'm a supporter.
You expect a vote on it in December, probably, and is the plan...
Well, yeah.
We're working to identify a date for committee action, and then it would go to the full council. We have only a couple of weeks in December when meetings are scheduled. I've asked the staff to work as hard as we can and coordinate with the other council members so that we can find a date for a committee meeting before the end of this calendar year. I hope we can do that. Scheduling is maybe the most difficult part of our job, but I'm eager to get it done, and I've asked staff to find a date as soon as possible.
The way it works is bills, proposals, and the like go to committee. They have work sessions, sometimes more than one, and then it goes to the full council, which will probably have a work session or two, and then make a decision. The way our schedule is working at this point, the council will be back in session after Martin Luther King Day, and that's the earliest that anything could come out of committee to the full council. And it might be later, depending upon the work of the committee. So, you know, government takes a while, I'm afraid.
The plan in its current state, is this something that's going to sort of slowly increase the minimum wage, or it's something that's going to kind of immediately jump up?
It steps to 2020.
Hi, my name is Bertha Verma, and I run the blog Finding Forest Glen. And one of the big questions and concerns I get on my blog is what to do with the intersection of Forest Glen Road and Georgia Avenue. As we know, it's one of the busiest intersections in the county. Almost 75,000 cars are going through, and many folks coming from East Forest Glen to West Forest Glen have to cross a six-lane, basically highway, to get to the metro. And, you know, one of the things I did on my blog is I put up a petition to see how many people would be interested in this particular subject. And we got 600 people to respond within the span of one month. And what was more kind of scary about this petition was not so much how many people were signing up, but the comments that were listed. And, you know, folks saying that they were actually hit by cars crossing it. Someone with a two-year-old in a stroller was hit. Now, I don't know, I mean, I'm just assuming these are true stories, but I'm not sure we, as a county, have fully addressed the need for looking at public transportation, how it's connecting with surrounding communities, and also looking at, you know, what to do with, you know, potential housing or development mixed use at the eight-acre site. And so I was wondering, is this a possibility for prioritization with the county council? I know this conversation has happened many times. I know there's a lot on the public record, but when are we going to actually see something happen in our side of the community? I see Bethesda getting tunnels, I see all sorts of development happening, but once again, the narrative continues for our part of the community.
Thank you very much for that question. That's an issue that council is acutely aware of. We've been struggling with that one for years, the real issue, and it sounds like you're pretty well-informed about it. The real issue is the question of being able to get a tunnel constructed underneath Georgia Avenue, so folks would not have to traverse Georgia, which is an incredibly dangerous intersection, which we all admit. Challenge, of course, is A, dealing with metro, B, this is a state road, and it's really hard to get state dollars to support that. The issue over in Bethesda between Walter Reed and NIH, the Naval Hospital and NIH, is that it's largely a federal project with state money as well. But it is a real problem, we're well aware of it, and has not moved up the list on solutions the way it really should be. Councilmember Reamer, did you have more to add on that subject?
Great summary. I mean, I think it needs to be a high priority for the county. I mean, it's walking distance for many, many homes, and to the hospital from the metro. And a key piece of that solution is going to be, you know, Metro wants to develop their parking lot there. And, you know, one of our requirements needs to be, any developer that comes in there needs to contribute towards a tunnel so we can get this thing built. But, you know, it can be affordable if we, you know, if we just make it a priority. So I do support that.
Yeah, and I can tell you, the community, I mean, at least from the feedback I've been getting, the community is very supportive of this issue. And, you know, in my conversations with Metro, one of the concerns they've had is that they're interested in moving forward with development of site, but the zoning process is going to take so long that they're worried that by the time, you know, they put forth the plans, the real estate market may not support any development. Obviously, a lot of the funds are going to have to come from some sort of private entity, developers, public funds, whatever. So one of the things I do want to stress, and if this can be put on the list, is if we can expedite that process, I wouldn't be surprised if you would see more participation from Metro.
Thanks for that observation. Let me just say also that Metro is routinely shopping its properties for development opportunity, but they have to negotiate their own arrangements with the private sector. And that site has been on and off the block for many years. So they've been distracted by some of their other needs at this moment in time. But indeed, at some point, at some time, they will perhaps move through the development process. But I wouldn't hold my breath on that. Councilmember Hucker?
Can I just add, because it's my district, thank you for raising this issue. I wasn't on the council for much of the history that my colleagues are referring to, but I'd be, I know of Metro's, the possibility of them developing around there. I've raised it myself with General Manager Paul Wiedenfeld. I believe they have bigger things, you know, fish to fry right now, and bigger things on their plate. But I'd be happy to convene a meeting with you, some of the other community leaders, representatives from Metro, folks from State Highway, so we could really put, fine-tune this plan and try and move it forward.
And one more word, Council Vice President Berlin.
You may know I chaired the Council of Governments this year, and so I've been working on metro issues for a long time now. And I met with Wiedenfeld and the head of the real estate for over an hour privately, just to have this kind of conversation as to what are they doing with their real estate holdings? Because here's an institution that needs more riders, and it's sitting on prime real estate, and it can't get out of its own way. Government doesn't do real estate very well. And so we really need for them to change the way in which they go about this business for their own purposes, as well as our communities.
Hi, my name is Simona Sanova, and first of all, thank you so much, Councilman Berlina, and Levittow, and Craig for considering the $15 minimum wage. As a first-generation American and as a minimum-wage worker, what you are considering actually is drastically important. We have President-elect today, and his name is Donald Trump, who has said he is that wages are too high. Keep in mind that as a Montgomery County resident, even though our wages are higher than the federal minimum wage, it is still 1075. Now, Mr. Councilwoman Berlina, that would not actually, an hour of work would not get us to use the metro. It would be about $12 to just take the metro. I was wondering if you can address what you plan to do to keep that bill going, and who you would use as economic analysis? And just to keep in mind that minimum-wage workers pay taxes as well. And what you see as 1075 on a bill is not actually what the minimum-wage worker gets in their paycheck. And as such, any extra dollar, definitely mine, would be spent towards local businesses and would decrease social costs, such as having to use public healthcare if you don't, cannot afford to buy it, and other similar services. So your plans about keeping this going, and definitely including the way the minimum-wage workers into the analysis?
Thank you very much. As you've heard previously, that is, we're, it's proceeding to committee, and we would expect to hear it in the full council sometime in the first part of next year.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bailey Condrey. I'm with the Civic Fed. I have a great way to get your hands on revenue quite rapidly. That's to stop putting synthetic turf fields at public high schools in the county. You currently have two, one at Walter Johnson High School, the other at Richard Montgomery High School. They're both defective. They both cost over $1 million. Four years ago, civic activists asked the county and the parks if they could come together and build a top-of-the-line grass field from which we could make real-world cost, excuse me, and maintenance comparisons. That is yet to happen. Forbes did an analysis... Forbes did an analysis between grass and synthetic turf. Top-of-the-line grass is 66% less than synthetic turf. It also doesn't become dangerous like Walter Johnson and Richard Montgomery. So perhaps we could get more back-and-forth between county council and the Board of Education to correct this issue and put more money where it needs to go and make children healthier by letting them play on grass. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And we have Jill Artman Faust from the Board of Education, who I know will take this issue back to her board. Councilmember Rice on the education issue, and Councilmember Elrich?
Well, Bailey, I've actually seen your emails, and thank you very much for your correspondence with my office. I'm not sure that you're aware, I think you are, that at Ridge Road Field, which is owned by the county and our Department of Parks and Recreation, we're actually undergoing that study right now with a natural turf field and are getting all of the maintenance numbers. That study is currently underway. And if you reach out to our Parks Director, Mike Riley, he can give you a status update. And if you contact my office, we'll certainly make sure that we make that connection with you. But that study is currently underway. I also wanna give credit to the rest of the council, who said we were going to go in the direction of Corconut and not go with straight artificial turf. And so from that perspective, it really is something worth the infill that oftentimes is very dangerous. You know, we were using crumb rubber before. And so from a health aspect, that's one of the things. But certainly from a cost-analysis perspective, that's what we're undergoing right now.
Susan, let's just go to questions. I know a lot of councilmembers want to weigh in on this, but I've seen a lot of hands. So let me, let the people speak here.
This lovely woman, if you could stand up? There you go. I'll hold it for you.
Good evening. I am Anita Neil Power, Montgomery College alum, and I live in District 3, Councilmember of Texas District. The county is great to fund a terrific community college. So many people benefit from Montgomery College. Just like the student who spoke, I too am aware, because I toured the Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus, and it is, definitely needs a new math and science building. Pictures are great, but when you actually tour the site and put yourself in the minds of our students, it is really not a pretty picture at all. I walked around and really examined what our students are using as part of their studies. And believe me, it was not a good sight to see the outdated labs and equipment. I ask that if you have not taken the tour or visited the building, please do so. I believe being inside the building and the rooms that our students are using would definitely give you an unbelief that our students are studying in that type of environment. Nevertheless, we thank you for doing everything you can to make sure that the students get this building as soon as possible so that they are ready when it is time to get a job and after they finish their education. To all councilmembers here tonight and to those who will be moving the college agenda forward, I would like to personally thank you for all that you are doing for our students, Montgomery College, and the residents of Montgomery County.
Well, thank you, Ms. Powell. And we are all very grateful to you for your many years of service within the community and now to the college. But as you've heard, we're on this issue of the math and science building in Tacoma Park. Next question.
Hi, I'm Sue Jacobson. I live in Rockville. I'm a Montgomery County retiree. I started working in Montgomery County in 1977 and now receive my pension from the county. I am very concerned about how our county responds to climate change, and I want my pension to be invested ethically. I was thrilled to learn about the introduction of a fossil-fuel divestment bill. Thank you, councilmembers Berliner, Navarro, and Elrich. I don't want my tax dollars or my pension invested in oil, coal, and natural gas industries. I don't support what those companies are doing to the climate, and I don't want the county to support them with its investments. I think the divestment bill is a great idea, and I hope you all come together and pass it as soon as possible. We don't have any time to waste on climate change with all the dangerous signs we are seeing over the world, increases in storms and flooding, and some places extreme drought and others. These companies also endanger our air and our water, which are the two things that human beings absolutely cannot live without. Would any of you like to let us know what we can do to help get this bill passed as soon as possible?
Well, thank you. You've been doing a good job on the email front, because we've heard from many of you on this subject. Council Vice President Berliner, do you wanna speak to this?
Well, thank you for speaking up, and thank you particularly being a retiree. So like you, I care deeply about climate change. Our council is at the forefront of this set of issues. We've passed more legislation, done more things. These are our values. So to have us investing and profiting from the very companies that undermine the values that we hold dear is simply not okay. But more importantly, the legislation that I've introduced with the support of two of my colleagues says that it should not come at the expense of our retirees, that the fiduciary duty does come first. And the point is that we can achieve that and harmonize that with our values. Because guess what? Oil, gas, and coal stocks are not good stocks to hold. And we're, so we can replace those stocks, and there are managers, there are funds out there that outperform indexes with fossil fuels. So we don't have to sacrifice your pension to achieve the values that all of us hold dear, and particularly given this election yesterday. Think globally, act locally. It is gonna be more and more important for local governments like ours to step forward and fill the breach. So thank you.
And you can count on us. I think the public hearing for that is on the 6th of December?
Public hearing is on the 6th, and we will hopefully take it up shortly thereafter. We are getting resistance, as you can imagine, from the Executive Director of our Board of Investment Trustees, and so we are gonna have to deal with those dynamics.
Okay, this is gonna be our last question tonight. Don't panic, folks. I know the councilmembers will stay here and answer a few questions when we're finished. We have to go very quickly on this one, though.
Okay. Hi, I'm Juliette Anderson. I'm from Chobe Chase. I'm asking a question about safe child visitation and exchange services and centers here in Montgomery County so that victims of domestic violence and their families can have a safe way to exchange their kids once they've attained a protective order against their abusive partner. I'm really excited that Ike Leggett has announced that he's approving funding for a center in Rockville and said that that would be a pilot program to expand to a network in the county. My question is, are you or who among you are in support of sustaining funding for that program and developing it into a network?
Okay, we only have five seconds. Five seconds. I am not kidding. Five seconds.
Let me turn to Councilmember Levantall, who's Chair of the Health and Human Services.
We do all support it. Lori Duker from Court Watch has been a great advocate for it. I'm delighted that the executive branch, I think, is very close to announcing a location. The problem has been finding location. But we all want it to happen, and I'm confident that we'll fund it in the coming budget.
Okay. Thanks so much to everybody for coming out tonight. We are out of time, but folks can stick around, talk to the councilmembers. They're all here. For County Cable Montgomery, I'm Susan Kennedy. Thanks for tuning in.